It is seven o'clock, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I suppose before too long it's going to become an issue that I can't seem to get the light on, on my mic.
Be read. Kinda hard to see.
Let's see. Yeah. Does it sound like I'm on? It doesn't, does it? Oh, wait a minute. There we go. Okay.
That's it, very good.
Okay. Item two on the agenda is additions and deletions to the agenda. Do we have any? County staff, commissioners? If not, we'll proceed with the agenda. Item three is approval of the minutes of July 12, 2018. Do we have any motions?
Motion approved.
Second? Motion approved by Mr. Landers, second by Mr. Bargnano. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. Item four on the agenda is a quasi judicial matter, which is not on consent. I'll read that into the record. It's Forty-Fifth Street Storage, request for major site plan approval for a manufacturing and storage complex consisting of seventeen storage buildings and four manufacturing buildings. It's located on the south side of Forty-Fifth Street between Forty-Third Avenue and Forty-Eighth Avenue. Glendale Trade Center, Inc. is the owner. Mills, Short and Associates, LLC is the agent. The zoning is IG, which is General Industrial. The land use designation is CI, which is Commercial Industrial. As I said, it is quasi judicial. So we'll start by asking the commissioners if you've had any ex-party communications, site visits, any discussions, or aware of any other reason why you cannot consider the matter based solely on the facts and on the law. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and proceed. We'll start by opening the quasi judicial hearing. And madam, anybody who intends to be heard on this matter, please stand and be sworn in by the clerk.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
And we'll start with an initial presentation by the county staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. For the record, I am Ryan Sweeney, Senior Planner with the County Planning Division. Tonight, we have a request for Forty-Fifth Street Storage, or Forty-Fifth Street Manufacturing and Storage Complex. The site plan does propose a total of seventeen storage buildings and four manufacturing buildings, and the total building area, when all added together, is a hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet. The site is located on the south side of Forty-Fifth Street, in between Forty-Third Avenue and Fifty-Eighth Avenue. The site is nineteen and a half acres, has zoned IG, General Industrial, and is also located within the West Gifford Industrial and Commerce Overlay Area, or the WGIC, and is subject to those overlay criteria. Here is an aerial depicting the existing conditions of the site. There is a small, existing, single-family home, an older home onsite that will be removed during site construction. There's also separately a single-family home in the southwest corner of the site that is not part of the project site, but we will discuss some access issues with that home and also buffering. And as you can see with the yellow parcel boundary lines, the subject site is actually comprised of five different parcels, and as one of the conditions of approval, those five separate parcels will need to be combined via unit title to create a single development site. Here is a, well, for the, or just so everyone's aware, from this point forward, north will now be to the left. So Forty-Fifth Street is now on the left side, south is on the right side, east is on the top, and west is on the bottom. This is a site plan showing the overall layout of the project. And as mentioned in the staff report, there is an existing twenty-foot access easement that runs from Forty-Fifth Street through the site and then down into the off-site single-family home site that I just mentioned on the aerial. That site has historically been accessed, actually from Forty-Third Street, through cutting across two properties to the south, and then ultimately into the home site. Recently, that historical access has actually been secured via recorded access easements, and the existing access easement, which was never improved, is in the process of being abandoned. The traffic circulation plan for the project includes a gated access to Forty-Fifth Street and a primary driveway loop, highlighted here in green. There's also some secondary two-way driveways through the middle of the loop, as well as the periphery of some of the perimeter buildings. The stormwater plan proposes a master stormwater pond, a single master stormwater pond at the south end of the site, and that will handle the stormwater runoff for the entire project. The landscape and environmental plan, there's a couple items that I want to go over. Again, the existing off-site single-family home is down here in the, what would be the southwest corner, and there is a requirement for a forty-foot wide type-A landscape buffer with a six-foot opaque feature, and the landscape plan does provide that buffer. There's also an upland set-aside requirement, and the applicant is proposing to set aside .93 acres of uplands here, sort of in between the project generally, and the single-family home site as well. There are two wetlands areas on the site. The western area is less than .5 acres and is, does not require mitigation, it will be filled for site development. The southeastern wetlands area is .7 acres, low-quality jurisdictional wetlands, will also be filled during site development, and it will require mitigation via credits from an off-site mitigation bank. And then lastly, it's hard to tell, but some of these tree samples are actually existing trees on the periphery that will be preserved in place. However, the majority of the trees, or all the trees, in the interior of the site where the development will occur, will be removed, and some of those trees are hardwood trees that will require mitigation per our county code. And with that, staff's recommendation is that the PCC grant major site plan approval for Forty-Fifth Street Manufacturing and Storage Complex with conditions stated in the staff report related to the unity of title, county wetlands permit, wetlands mitigation credits, and tree mitigation. Thank you.
Do any commissioners have any questions of county staff?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Landers.
Regarding the traffic circulation, because I know this comes up on residential periodically for the fire trucks.
Your mic's not on.
No, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, much better.
Regarding the traffic circulation, I know residential, the fire trucks have some requirements, and the turnarounds through here that I'm looking at, is that all sufficiently sized?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Landers, so, a few things. These are really wide driveways, these are forty-five, forty to forty-five feet wide, which is much wider than your typical commercial driveway, which is only about twenty-four feet wide. So the turning radiuses to make it around through this loop are sufficient and have been reviewed by the fire. Also, just for what it's worth, the gate, I don't know if you're familiar with what's called a Knox box access, but they have a special fire access code to get in and out during emergency.
Thank you. Any other questions by the commissioners?
Yes, for a development this size, is the stormwater runoff, surface runoff into the retention pond, or is it underground through underground culverts?
Mr. Chair, Dr. Day, I, the engineers here, I'm fairly certain, I'm not, I didn't review the drainage plan that closely, but there has to be some underground conveyance with inlets and pipes, and then I think the rear might be some surface runoff as well.
There was a comment someplace in the materials, an interconnected system of stormwater pipes and drainage structures that will direct the project stormwater runoff into the master stormwater pond. I don't know the specifics, but that's at least generally what the materials say. Any other questions by the commissioners? I have two quick questions. The abandonment of that private easement, I notice it's not a condition of approval. And at least it kinda struck me that we really shouldn't be approving a project on top of an easement, so the easement ought to be abandoned before we, or as a condition of our approval. Does that make sense to you?
That was not staff's conclusion, but I think normally, that type of situation, we do have an easement abandoned. Many times, that's a drainage or utility easement where there's actually, you know, service involved here. I think the specifics of this one, and I think the applicant can speak to this, it's a bit unusual. You can actually see on this graphic here with the site plan that's up right now, it actually appears that there's a, appears that there's a gap in that easement itself, so it may not be really effective. It ends up at the northern end of the site, basically at a canal, so there'd have to be a culvert crossing there. It's not historically been used. So the way that we've looked at this, and we've talked to the applicant and the attorney's office, the developer is proceeding at his own risk with this. The access, private access easement, you know, right now is not, it's not functional. It would take a lot of, a lot of work absent this project to actually make it usable. In the end, if for some reason, the applicant has to cure this and actually accommodate it, they can make changes, there are no buildings proposed where the access is. Actually, the access, if this easement were to be used, is actually enhanced by this project since it goes up and down one of the, one of the driveways. So the applicant's proceeding at their own risk, they would have to modify the design somewhat to make it work if that had to happen, and that's basically where we are. But we did want to, we did want to present the issue, you know, to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
But you are asking us to approve this design.
Yes.
And if it's not abandoned, the design would have to be modified. Is that what you're telling me?
That's, that's correct. If, again, I, I'm not sure how effective that easement is since there's a gap in it, but it is of record at the moment.
Okay, and I see, I see Mr. Sullivan has his hand up. Sure, come on, come on down, Chuck. And just give us your name and address for the record. Pardon?
I want to just warn you.
Oh, okay.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, I did some research on this, and I, a lot of this is, you're going back thirty, forty years, and it's hard to figure out what happened. I talked to Ron Rennick. What I think happened is, this property was originally all together, and that SF home was, I don't know if it was moved there or placed there by a prior landowner, and that, when they put it there, there's a road off of Fifty-Eighth, it's Forty-Third Avenue, and there's also, if you go down to the, to the west of that home, there's a FPL transfer station that has a road to it. So, okay, so you can see right to the, I would say to the south of the transfer station, there's a road there. It's hard to say, it's right along that yellow line, and that goes to the house, and I, as near as I can tell, that was how they originally were getting to the house when they, when they sold it. But, at some point many years ago, somebody did a title, a survey, and they found out that they didn't actually own that land. The land was owned by two landowners, Cathco and Barkwell. So, the original owner gave that person an easement through our property, and it was never used. As near as I can tell, it was an easement for, just to meet the legal ingress and egress requirements as far as title work. It's never been used, it really can't be used, this is really heavily wooded area, and you're almost a quarter of a mile from Forty-Fifth Street, so it would be prohibitively expensive for them to even use it. So when I found out this problem, I went to the landowners to, which is Cathco, which is, and Barkwell, which are the two landowners. And what they did is, they went ahead and I had the surveyor go out there, survey the easement that she's actually, the lady is using, and we created an easement based on what she's actually using. So they gave her an easement over ingress and egress. So, that's, we, I mean, we took care of it. Now, the easement that was given to her does not connect to her property. I'm thinking it's a Scrivener's error, Alan, but what it does is, it's either ten or twenty feet short of her property, so there's a practical problem for her easement, but it's never really been an issue because she's never used it. Now, we have a suit to quiet title, I have a motion for summary judgment, you know, the way I look at it, I think I'm gonna get it cleared up, but I look at it as my risk, it's, there is an easement there, but it's one of those things that, you know, you run into property issues, it's been around forever, it's not really a practical problem, and as I said, she has an easement, and we've given her legal ingress and egress over Forty-Third Street, which, and the county can correct me, but this has sort of been a sore spot for her in the past with the county of who has to maintain her road, and basically, I think, as I understand it, the county has told her is that, this is your road, you have to maintain it. Is that right? I think.
I believe that's correct.
So, I mean, she's maintaining the road, she's been maintaining the road, so, you know, it's, I mean, it is something I, we just don't want it to hold up the process because it's a practical matter, it's going to be taken care of, but also, it's a practical matter, it's really never going to be an issue, but it's our headache, but we did take care of it, and, you know, I don't see it as being a problem, and we just, we'd like to go ahead and move forward knowing that. But I say, just in the abundance of caution, I moved for a summary judgment to clear title, I filed a clear, a quiet title action, so.
When was the easement granted? Do you know?
I don't have the file, it was, I'm thinking fifteen, twenty years ago. And so, as I said, you know, this is, what, originally, this was one property, I think they sold it off, and, you know, originally, I think they moved that house there too, I think, I don't know, but.
Bill, do you have any thoughts on the easement issue?
You know, I looked at, after Mr. Sullivan explained it to me, it's kind of a three-legged stool with two of the legs missing. I mean, you have to culvert a deep canal on Forty-Fifth, and then you have to get the remainder of the easement into the property that's lacking. You know, whether it's a Scrivener's error, or whatever it was, I think it was even bef, I think it was older than fifteen or twenty years ago.
It's been a while.
If I can remember right, I think it was back into the sixties or the early seventies. So, you know, given that the quiet title suit is there, given that she has now legal deeded access that she had not had before, I think we're clearing up one title problem that she might have had in having legal deeded access to her property and trying to eliminate another cloud on the title as far as the easement is concerned. I'm, I'm okay with going forward because the risk is on them, not on the county.
Okay. Any other commissioners have any other questions for county staff?
Yes, would you go back to the image showing the jurisdictional wetlands? The jurisdictional wetland that's on the east side, it looks like that is partly in the project development and partly out of it?
Mr. Chair, Dr. Day, good point, these were approximate locations, I can, oh, I'm sorry. My mic's not on, apologize. Those were just approximate bubbles, I'm sorry. The, the wetland area is, is shown and delineated on the project survey, it's merely.
Wetland is in the project.
Correct, yes, yes, yeah, that was merely, just for graphical purposes.
Yep.
Any other questions by commissioners? I had one last question. Does the retention pond get fenced here?
Mr. Chair, yes, it will have a, well, the project, the overall project will have a perimeter fence anyways. I can't recall if there's a internal fence, I believe there is, if the, what they call the design pull, if the depth is at least two feet, there's a requirement for an interior fence as well.
Okay. Any other questions of county staff? Is the applicant here? I know Mr. Sullivan's here, would the applicant like to make any presentation? Yeah, I saw your engineer stand up and get sworn in, so.
Good evening. My name's Wesley Mills with Mills, Short and Associates, I'm here to answer any questions if you have, have them. Just one thing I can clarify on the stormwater pond is that the pipes are for conveyance and all the treatment happens in the wet pond. There is a perimeter fence around the entire project as well as a perimeter fence around the stormwater pond itself.
Do the, do the pipes have an elbow that hold water at the sewer grate?
The, what happens is, is there's drainage structures throughout the site, and then those drainage structures are tied to pipes, and those pipes are connected into the pond. So, so the structures, they do have small sumps in them, six inches, that have bottoms that will allow the water to percolate through them, but for the most part, the water conveys to the stormwater pond.
And for the most part, that entire line is dry during, during dry weather?
The conveyance pipes, for the most part, are dry. The discharge line to Indian River Farms, because of how it ties into the ponds in the back of the site, and we have to discharge the canal at the front of the site, that main line has a weir in it, and the portion, you know, towards the pond that, that the weir is holding back the water, that will be saturated or filled with water, yes.
Any other questions of the applicant? If not, thank you very much. Would anybody else like to be heard on this matter? Anything further from county staff? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the quasi judicial hearing. Commissioners, do you have a preference?
Move to approve with staff's recommendations.
We have a motion by Dr. Day, a second by Ms. Waldrop. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, please signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item five, which is a public hearing. It's, and again, I'll read this into the record, it's consideration of land development regulation amendments to chapters nine eleven, nine twelve, nine thirteen, nine fourteen, nine fifteen, and nine seventy-one, and nine seventy-two regarding the affidavit of exemption and final plat review and approval process, master lot drainage plans for new subdivision projects, affordable housing and conceptual plans, early model homes on subdivision construction sites, review and approval process for places of worship, and medical district side yard setback requirements. It's a legislative matter, it is a public hearing. Let's, I'll start with the county staff's presentation.
Are we opening the public hearing, or?
Well, I was thinking I'd open the public hearing once county staff has made its presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, as you can tell by the agenda title, this is quite a lot, so bear with me, it's gonna be throwing a lot at you, but ultimately, let me start my slideshow here. This is essentially the second installment of the land development regulation amendments recommended by the Development Review and Permit Process Committee, or the committee for short, as well as staff. This set of LDR amendments includes seven separate ordinances, each focused on a specific process or topic. Five of the seven ordinances are based directly on recommendations from the committee and staff, and the other two are piggyback ordinances from staff as well. The first installment of the LDR amendments from the committee were considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission on February eight, 2018, and those were ultimately adopted by the board on March thirteenth, 2018. So, essentially, I'm gonna take it ordinance by ordinance and hit the highlights, there's a lot more to it in the staff report as well. Ordinance number one is regarding the affidavit of exemption or AOE review and approval process, and the main change from this ordinance is, under the current AOE process, it involves multiple different documents such as surveys, easements, right-of-way dedication, covenants, and essentially, what we're gonna require now is a single recordable map, similar to a final plat, so all of that information will be on a single document or source of information. It also creates a uniform process for AOEs moving forward, and it hopefully will reduce the amount of back and forth that goes, back and forth between staff and the applicant. Instead of reviewing multiple different documents, it's a single concise document. The end product will be easier for property owners as well as real estate and development users as well, and this particular ordinance is supported by staff and came from the committee.
Let me stop for a second and just say to the commissioners, if you have any questions or comments.
You wanna do it ordinance?
On each of these ordinances, as staff completes its presentation on that ordinance, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, we'll do it, we can do it ordinance by ordinance if you prefer.
Take it by ordinance by ordinance. And I won't ask, I won't ask each time, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Right, just chime in.
Just jump in whenever you feel like you want to say something.
All right, I'll proceed to the second ordinance, and there's, there's a lot with this one. Ordinance number two makes several changes to the final plat review and approval process. The first item from this ordinance requires title certification be by a Florida licensed attorney only, not a title company. The state legislature recently, I think in this past session, allowed title companies to start issuing a title certification for final plats. The committee and staff, with staff support, agreed that that's not the best idea, so we're, the change requires that it only be by a Florida licensed attorney, and this particular item of the batch was enacted by the board through pending ordinance doctrine earlier this year, so this is the formal sort of code change, but. Number two, this ordinance provides applicants a final plat checklist prepared by the county surveyor for their use when preparing and reviewing a final plat before submitting it to staff. Change number three authorizes staff to use what we call a stop-loss comment for grossly deficient submittals, so when the attorney's office, or planning staff, or any other reviewing department sees huge errors within the first few minutes of reviewing, they can essentially say, start over and go back to the drawing board rather than generate, you know, forty, fifty, sixty comments. It also provides for developer county agreements that automatically convert from a construction security to a warranty maintenance security, and what that means is, sometimes, when a subdivision is built at least seventy-five percent, the developer can enter into a contract for construction to build the remaining twenty-five percent, and they can go to final plat before getting a certificate of completion. But separately, there is a one-year warranty maintenance after completion for the subdivision improvements, and what was happening is, when they're, when the developer was choosing this option, they had a bond out to cover the remaining, remaining construction, and then they had to post a second bond for the warranty maintenance, essentially double bonding, and there was an overlap period. So now, through an optional, through an optional process, that security can automatically convert to become the same security for warranty maintenance. The change allows surveying and engineering or soft costs to be excluded from the maintenance security amount, so once they do receive a certificate of completion, they're really only securing the physical improvements, not engineering or surveying costs. The, it also clarifies the two options for obtaining a final plat, which I kinda just touched on, one is essentially bonding the remaining construction before a certificate of completion and going to final plat early, or building the entire subdivision, getting it deemed complete by the county and then going to final plat. And lastly, it updates final plat format items recommended by the clerk, some technical format requirements for final plats that they requested be included. And this ordinance as well is supported by staff and is a recommendation by the committee. I know that's a lot, so if anybody has any questions.
I do have, oh, go ahead.
Going to your first bullet point, up until this point, has certification by a Florida licensed attorney and/or a title company been acceptable?
I'll defer to Bill.
Yes, it has been.
Yes.
What the law changed.
I don't think you're on, Bill.
What the law changed is the amount of responsibility of the title. What the law changed is the amount of responsibility of the title company. They limited the amount of damages caused by a bad title search on the part of a title company to the fee paid by the landowner for the title search. So, if it would be a severe error affecting thirty or forty lots, all the title company would have to do is throw a couple of thousand dollars in and walk away from the problem their obligation is satisfied pursuant to the statute. We decided to do what the law allows, one seventy-seven, the chapter that deals with platting, says that counties or municipalities can make more stringent laws. So, our thinking was that if an attorney is involved with a title problem, that attorney is probably backed up by a title company. They will be much more willing to fix any title problems that may crop up because there's malpractice insurance behind them and title insurance behind them as well. So, that's the reason that we went more stringent. We inquired of the developers the approximate cost involved in something like this. They were all saying, you know, we'd much rather go with an attorney because it might cost another couple of thousand dollars, and that was the limit to it. It was only fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars that they talked about. But the assurances that they would have with the title certificate issued by attorney would far outweigh that, so they were in favor of it.
So, this modification of the ordinances is in essence cutting the title companies out?
Yes. Of ten plats that would come in for review, maybe one would be a title company certification.
I have a question on the construction security converting to warranty maintenance security. I can imagine scenarios where most of the infrastructure is constructed except a small amount, so the construction security might be quite small, and in fact, less than the amount required for the warranty and maintenance for the one-year period. Is there some provision to step up the amount if necessary?
You want to do through? If you can keep...
It is kinda tricky to get the mic on, so...
You gotta pound on the thing to convince it.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, so the amount that has to be posted remains the same, so you're correct. There could be a scenario where there's not enough to roll over, and you probably wouldn't even choose that option for this. What... So, no changes in practice are gonna be allowed in terms of how much has to be posted for the warranty maintenance. So, they may be able to use part of the initial security and then add to it if they had to.
When that conversion happens, if it's not sufficient, you're gonna have to increase to meet the warranty maintenance amount required by our LDRs.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay.
I had one other comment.
Go ahead.
Ryan, the clerk's block at the upper right-hand corner of the plat, does that now need to be three by eight inches to account for the longer numbers that the clerk is using, or is three by five still sufficient?
Bill, good question. We did not change the dimension in the ordinance. We clarified that it's now a clerk's file number, not no longer a docket number, but we, at your suggestion or at the clerk's suggestion, we might wanna remove the dimension entirely just in case.
Let's check with Nancy tomorrow and see. She's the person that would be able to answer that right away.
Perfect. They didn't ask for that, but it's good to check while we're in the process.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to ordinance, ordinances three and four are on this slide. Ordinance number three is pretty short. Ordinance number three is master lot drainage plans for new subdivision projects, and essentially at the land development permit stage, which is the construction drawings for a subdivision, there will be a new requirement that any new subdivisions, when applying for their land development permit, must include a master lot drainage plan, provides typical dimensions for all of the lots throughout the subdivision. This ordinance will also waive the LDP modification fee for any voluntary submittal of a master lot drainage plan for a current or existing subdivision, so they can also submit a master lot drainage plan. Ultimately, what it does is when the individual homes come back in, now without a master lot drainage plan, they're having to do a one-off lot drainage plan for each individual lot. And this will, it won't be an exact plug-and-play, but it'll provide some basic dimensions. Does it drain forward? Does it drain backwards? Where are the high points? And then the individual lot surveyor has a lot more information to go by, and hopefully it will speed up the home review on the tail end. I doubt there's any questions on that. Ordinance four, the affordable housing project conceptual plans. This ordinance creates a new conceptual administrative approval process for affordable housing grant applicants. The new process will be reviewed through the administrative approval process, which is about a two-to-three week process versus the tier, our current conceptual site plan process, which has to go through TRC and takes about six to twelve weeks. The conceptual administrative approval will not secure development entitlements for an affordable housing project, and the affordable housing project will require a separate, fully detailed final site plan if it comes back in, if it is awarded the grant. Ultimately, the grant application form requires that the county say, yes, this has received conceptual approval by the county. And right now, what's happening is the grant applicants are coming in a few weeks before the application deadline and saying, hey, can you guys check this box? And we say, no, our current process is at best six to twelve weeks. So, we're creating a faster, more cost-effective process for them, so as long as they're a little bit ahead of the ball, we can check the box and they can still make their grant application deadline. Both of these ordinances, again, are supported by staff and the committee. Ordinance number five allows for construction of early model homes within subdivisions. While the subdivision is still under construction as well, it hasn't been deemed to be complete through a certificate of completion. The ordinance identifies the minimum required infrastructure improvements that must be provided before an early model home can be opened to customers. It requires a meets and bounds survey for each model home that's gonna be constructed if this is even before final plat, which would be really early in the process. And it provides a minimum and maximum number or percentage of allowable early model homes. So, all subdivisions, regardless of size, even the smallest ones, you know, fifteen or twenty lots, are allowed at least two early models. For larger subdivisions or a large subdivision phase, the maximum number is five percent of the total units within the subdivision or phase. So, for a hundred-unit subdivision, single phase, they would be allowed five early models before certificate of completion. So, we wanted to be fair to the little guy that may only be fifteen or twenty units, and then as you get bigger, we kinda scale back how many model homes you can build early. And this ordinance, again, is supported by staff and the committee. Ordinance number six, places of worship review and approval process. This ordinance changes the use classification and the review and approval process for places of worship from a special exception use approval to administrative permit use within the agricultural and rural districts, all of the single-family districts, and the three multifamily districts. Places of worship are allowed as a permitted use or administrative permit use in other districts as well. So, essentially, now, after this change, special exception use approval will not be required for any of the zoning districts. And all the districts that place of worship are allowed, they'll either be permitted or administrative permit use. Specifically, the administrative permit use process applies more objective criteria and a more streamlined approval process for places of worship, and this is in response to federal case law that questions the subjectivity of the special exception use approval process. It also does make a change to one of the specific land use criteria applied to places of worship for their locational slash traffic criterion. This particular ordinance was supported by the county attorney's office and staff, and the original concept was floated to the board about two years ago, so this is the formal ordinance putting this concept into play.
I have a question.
Sure.
The special exception use process has always had that compatibility and no adverse impact, kinda catch-all, general, subjective categories. And places of worship can be fairly intrusive in a neighborhood. I mean, they involve frequently a lot of parking, a lot of activities. And I notice now, as we go away from special use exception, in these districts, agricultural, rural, I don't think there's too much of an issue, but single-family districts and multifamily districts, there could be an issue. So, I guess my question is, do we have sufficiently specific criteria, objective criteria, that will now be in place to make sure that the place of worship is compatible with the single-family district or multifamily district, and there are no adverse impacts to those residential districts? I know you added a little bit about, you know, unless otherwise approved by the Public Works Department to try to objectify that a little bit, but do you feel like at this point, we have sufficient objective criteria in place to make sure that the intrusions are not incompatible or adversely impacting?
Right. Good question. And if I could just draw your attention to attachment seven, that'd be the ordinance that we're talking about, and page thirteen in your backup. Those are the objective criteria that are proposed to replace that existing criterion of, you know, it has to be on a major thoroughfare unless otherwise approved by the Public Works Director. And I think we have sufficient setbacks and buffers and so forth for a place of worship use, and it's the locational criteria that are really important in terms of traffic, which is one that I think you'd mentioned, Mr. Chairman. So, the criteria would be that they have to have frontage on a thoroughfare plan road, which would be a major road, and that was where the traffic would be directed off of, or have a land use designation of M1 or M2, and that's our eight and ten unit per acre, basically multifamily areas. So, we would allow a use of a road that was not a thoroughfare plan road. It might be a collector road. Just giving example, some of you may be familiar with the St. Peter's Missionary Baptist Church and St. Peter's Charter School in Gifford. It's in an M2 area. It's off of a local north-south street. It's wide. There are a couple of multifamily projects off of that, and that works well there. Could be located in a PD, a planned development, where that particular use and access is taken into account, or if it's what we would call a small traffic generator. And we do have a number, a number of smaller churches that would meet this in a residential area, but they're small in scale, and they would be limited in those situations. So, we think that those criteria line up well with, I think, the concern that you had. One other point I wanted to make, one of the probably more important traffic criteria for some churches is where they have a separate use that goes through a separate process, such as a school or preschool. We have other criteria already for those, so this would be simply for the place of worship use itself, but we think that these locational criteria address the traffic that could be associated with a larger, a larger place of worship.
Mr. Chairman, I could just chime in also with the daycare and school, those other uses that, those will still remain special exception uses in most of the single-family zoning districts, so that process and compatibility issue will still be able to be addressed through those additional uses.
Okay. So, county staff is satisfied that these new requirements coming in will provide objective standards to make sure that the house of worship is compatible with the neighborhood, is not creating adverse impacts with the neighborhood?
Yes, that's correct. Any other questions? Move on to the seventh and final ordinance. This is, the seventh ordinance is changing the side yard setback for the medical zoning district, and this change will allow a zero side yard setback within the medical zoning district under certain circumstances, as currently allowed in several other commercial districts like the CL, the CG, and the CH. And those circumstances are that it needs to be part of an interconnected parking design and secured through a shared access easement. I've got an aerial here that shows, this is actually in the CG district, and it's not quite a zero, but it's a reduced side setback. But essentially, the side setback in a commercial setting like this is essentially aligned through the site. It's for ownership purposes, but it functions as one site. And this could allow that same, that same allowance could allow for more efficient design and greater increased building envelope flexibility for the med district. Smaller medical buildings or medical complexes, a lot of times, those medical complexes are actually condoed out, and so, again, a zero setback or a reduced setback could be more efficient than a conventional setback of ten feet from a condo line. And that's the final ordinance for this batch.
Okay.
And let me just make staff's recommendation. So, staff's recommendation is that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the board to adopt all seven ordinances, and it amends actually seven chapters, nine eleven, nine twelve, nine thirteen, nine fourteen, nine fifteen, nine seventy-one, and actually, it's eight, nine seventy-two, I'm sorry.
Any other questions or comments by the commissioners to staff? If not, it is a legislative public hearing. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anybody like to be heard on this matter? Nobody coming forward? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have any motions with respect to this matter?
Motion to approve.
That was Mr. Bragnano, and a second by Ms. Waldrop. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor please signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. That brings us to commissioners' matters. Do any commissioners have any matters they'd like to bring forward? If not, item seven, planning matters, we do have an informational package. Any questions or comments with respect to those? I noticed a couple of these matters deal with essentially autonomous cars or driverless That's gonna be a pretty interesting issue. I assume, I don't think our state has done anything on that issue yet, or have they?
Our state has allowed those types of vehicles on the roadways under certain circumstances, so it's, that's why some of the experimentation could happen in Florida, and you've got, you know, what we've seen is people with fleets of vehicles looking to try it, to try it first, and we'll see how it rolls out. As you all are probably aware, you know, we do try to put informational items in here. It doesn't mean we necessarily agree with everything that's in here, but we wanna let you know what others are saying or thinking about it, and it'll be a, it's a question of when. But we, it seems that the first, first people that will use it a lot are people that have fleets and can kinda control their own logistics. I don't know when it's gonna be. There are some days I wish I had a smart car.
Sometimes I...
For other people as well as myself. But yes, you'll continue to see articles on that.
Okay, very good. Anything else on the planning information?
What's the September meeting schedule looking like?
Right, good. It looks like we will not need to have a September thirteenth meeting. It does look like we will need to have a September twenty-seventh Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Item eight, attorneys' matters?
I have nothing.
Anything else to come before us today? If not, thank you all for attending. Meeting...